College of the Order, we stand with the pleasure of allegiance. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment as signs for the victims that we spend the tragedy that just took place in York. Please take your seats. Throw a ball please. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time?
Victoria, Resonance, Chatham Street, Sunbury. I just want to talk to the council on new business. Last meeting, it was discussed about the funds for Valley Fusion, the summer kickoff. First, I want to say that I support the events that happened in the city of Sunbury. I actually helped with that event last year and the national aid out, things like that. I think what happened here is the process got murky, okay? The process got murky. Our solicitor, city solicitor did something, you know, he created a nonprofit, which is, I understand why he did it because he's a good guy, but he's our city solicitor. And then our mayor and those folks sitting on the Valley Fusion, it got murky, okay? So as a city committee chairperson, I have to say, when we vote on these dollars, because I don't get money out of any line item, okay? And it got really murky. So I'm just asking for really good clarification, really good honest communication, to explain to the citizens how this works. I don't think it was intentional, I think it was just the process. And I'm not saying I don't want events, I just think, and I just have to bring up a point that when that announcement went out on social media about Valley Fusion, unfortunately, I did contact the person that did that post, because right in the post, it said that the city of Sunbury was financially supporting that nonprofit, okay? And then it was redacted, it was redacted. And I did that out of concern, because that's where we're at, okay? And that's why I reached out. And then I was questioned, what the hell was my problem? Well, my problem is, as a citizen and as a committee chairperson, I was trying to avoid all this for you, okay? So please, please have good communication and so people understand how this is going to work, okay? Because again, I don't think it was necessarily intentional, but as a Light Fest person like right now, I can buy Christmas decorations for our city at 40% off, but I don't have those funds. So you see where I'm coming from? To say, hey, can you front me $5,000 to buy some pretty lights? So just again, that's all I'm asking, okay?
So going off what you said, Victoria, so what was on the agenda here tonight? So for the last couple of years, we have fundraised money and we have our own line item in city care of the event. So what we're asking for here tonight, if council approves it, is that the money that we fundraise either be released to the Valley Fusion or the bills that we get for the event be paid out of that line item down. So the city no longer has the money in their access anymore, like, so what we fundraise will go back towards the event. And then the economic money that you were speaking of will not be asked for from the group.
And that's my concern. Again, like I said, I think it just got murky and not necessarily on purpose.
How much is Google?
Well, when I spoke to treasurer troop a couple of weeks ago, it was like $14,000. I didn't some change, I don't know the exact number, but that was a couple of weeks, so that could have changed between then and now, I'm not 100% sure on that.
Is it in the budget?
You mean the line item that's on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
No, that was like in the special accounts, that money that was fundraised, like, what we just set up for shade tree commission last week, kind of like how Light Fest has their own items and when they raise things, it goes into that account, like that. So that's not included in the city budget.
So there's no city money in it?
There's no, like, the money that is in the line item that's for summer kickoff, that's not city money. That was made up, it was fundraised through the vendors, sponsorships, so on and so forth, for the last two years.
But when this first started though, I think this could be confusion, because when
Correct, yes.
first did the summer kickoff, that was economic development money that was used in the beginning, correct?
Yes, that was voted on by council, correct, yes.
Okay, I think that's also
Yeah, so like I said, but this money here was money that was fundraised for the last couple of years and just being asked that either when we get bills in, that we give the city till that line item is down to zero, or the money be released to the group, that we can, you know, do the same thing. It doesn't matter how, who is in charge of the money in a sense. So that's what, that's on the agenda for tonight.
And the only other thing, I just, and I know you replied and I saw the thing in the newspaper that, you know, Joel put that in there, that you, your paperwork was submitted, whatever. Just make sure when you're doing those, because again, it's murky. What people think, you know, Valley Fusion City, blah, 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 is that small game of chance stuff?
Yeah, so that was
And you guys were under somebody, correct?
Yeah, so like, as you said, Joel has been helping us every step of the way. And you know, once the money is, the summer kickoff, when the council sort choose to however really disburse that money, then like, there'll be no connection between Valley Fusion and the city in a financial state at all.
Correct, okay. I'm just concerned because it was brought to my attention, and again, I'm not alleging anything, I'm just making sure you're, you're under an umbrella of that
Yeah, like I said, Joel, yeah, Joel helped us through that entire process and things like that, yes.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items at this time? All right, moving on here, city administrator update, Mr. Backer?
Can I read Joel's statement?
Yeah, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
So solicitor Reese asking to read a statement on his behalf since he couldn't be here tonight. Said relative to Sussway and Avenue, I ask that you read the following statement for me. In issues and/or problems arising within Sussway and Avenue project are obviously a public concern at this time. While the city cannot and will not attempt to stifle any public comments or concerns, it is unfortunately my duty to suggest that no member of council or city employee comment further on these matters at this time. This advice is given in the hopes to avoid unnecessary litigation and hopefully allow the revisionary process to take its course at weathered better. So I just, he asked me to read that to, for the public and to council, so I'll just do that one on his behalf.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so city administrator update. So I got a call from Senator Culver and Representative Center today. They helped secure $300,000 through the DCV whole time mobile grant for Packer Street. So I have to run the numbers tomorrow, exactly how close we are, but we are very close to being funded for the Packer Street project. I've been working with some investors and business owners on expansion and redevelopment properties in Sunbury. They asked me to keep some of that stuff confidential at this time, because they're not ready to release that to the public, but I just wanted to let everybody know that we are working with some investors and business owners for expansion and redevelopment. And follow up from working with the state majority policy committee on play. I've been working with the state, like, past office on ways to expand the funding and timelines for funds to be used toward light and other safety and infrastructure projects. That has been a problem at the state level, not just for us, but also other municipalities. So I'm working on some items with them to see if we can get that expanded for all municipalities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Backer. All right, moving on, we did have a proclamation request. I shall read it now. The proclamation affirming the city of Sunbury committed to serving as an inclusive and welcoming community to all residents. Whereas the city of Sunbury is committed to fostering and welcoming inclusive and safe community where all individuals can live, work, study, and thrive. Whereas our city recognizes the strength founded in our differences and contributions to all people regardless race, ethnicity, nationality, gender identity, sexual orientation, religious ability, or immigration status. Whereas across our nation, communities face increasing challenges stemming from policies and rhetoric that may underdo, that undermine the dignity and rights of certain individuals, including but not limiting immigrants, refugees, LGBTQIA individuals, and other historical groups. Whereas recent policy legislation across the state and federal levels has solidified protections and resources to individuals and communities. Whereas the city of Sunbury remains steadfast in upholding the values of mature respect dating and equal opportunity, ensuring all policies and practices reflect and unwavering commitment to these policies. The city recognizes by working together and not against one another in our community, strengthens our social fabric, enriches our culture and economic values, while enriching and sharing the values of justice and fairness for all. The city acknowledges the importance of ensuring that all residents can fully participate, access education, local services, and engage in community institutions while developing a trusting relationship with local services and law enforcement. Therefore, I, Mayor Josh, present the city of Sunbury by proclaiming the city of Sunbury hereby reconfirms of welcoming inclusiveness and supports all values of residents here in the city of Sunbury. So in testimony, I here do present this affirmative action on city of Sunbury in February 24th, 2025. Moving on here, to an update here, we just wanted to inform the public in advance here that the no parking ordinance will go back into effect on March 15th. Just if you wanted to familiarize yourself with the dates and the times. Once again, March 15th, the no parking ordinance goes back into effect. Like you said, there will not be warnings or anything given out. This is the third or fourth year that we have done it like this. We just wanted to make an announcement, and will be one at the next council meeting as well, posted on our Facebook page, but we just wanted to get the word out there now for everyone to start telling. All right, moving on here to old business, the audit. So last meeting, I brought about doing a forensic audit. I know the controller said, I don't know if you had any information, Spank, but I did. I know if you had anything to share, I can, if you didn't.
I think you're the, the share at this point is, is that I really don't believe there's a necessity to have a forensic audit on number one or two. I don't think at this point that what has happened up there in the ice skating warrants an extensive type audit review procedure is more appropriate. And I know that Nate and I have definitely talked about this. And at this point, I would not recommend an audit of any type other than the state or the single audit that the city actually goes through. They'll look at stuff, there's things in the audit, has been in the audit for several years now as far as making deposits, but I think in conversation with Mr. Raister, I think there's some procedures that are being put in place that is going to help prevent this from happening in the future. So at this point, I would not recommend an audit. $45 of what the amount is is something that is significant enough to be possible.
Well, it was more, well, there was alleged more than $45 at the individual
Alleged?
Well, I mean, that was, that they allegedly took, but
What is alleged and what is proven or charged is two different things.
Well, I just, I just have a quick question, so maybe you can clarify the clarification on the two differences. But a few years ago, when we had a city employee have allegations about theft at a different organization, it was requested that we should get an audit done on the police department because of having access to money and funds. And I longingly said, yeah, we should do it, to verify, to make sure, but here
I think that was a whole different situation.
But here we know there was, here we, but here we do know there was money taken. We don't know the exact amount, and from what was in our reports and what was alleged.
Was the person charged with, still not?
You mean, you mean as of right now? No, now that right now it's in the, in city.
So, you know, we can't, we can't
So what we, what we do know that was, there was money missing, correct?
I don't know, I don't know for this.
Do we know that there was money missing?
He wasn't charged with that.
No, no, I just, I'm not asking if the individual took, I just ask, do we know that there was money missing on our financial aspect of it?
I don't know. We have no records.
Nate, do you, do you know if there was money missing?
Do you want me to get Joel on the phone and see if we should even answer that?
I mean, as simple as, I mean, you guys put in the paper how you want to be transparent, which I'm all for. I think we should be transparent with everything.
We do want to be transparent.
But just not, this is not a forensic audit, transparent.
I just don't think it's appropriate to comment on whether there is or is not missing money if there's going to be pending litigation, that's my personal. But Josh, you said you found more information regarding audit, what did you get?
Well, I mean, I called the auditors that do our audit. So I asked, like, I called, so they, the ones that are familiar with our, do our account. And they said they do not do a deep dive forensic audit, they just do a small glance of a week or two, but not a full deep dive to make sure whatever's matching up, like you took in, you know, for example, you had this much scheduled, you had this much canceled, are those numbers matched up? They do not do that type of audit.
Exactly, that's what a single audit is, exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, because we said about seeing if they would do, if there was another off branch of their company, they do not. So I did my research, I'm just saying, I just still think we should look for an option, what it costs.
They're not, they won't do a forensic audit, but they can, if you want to expand the scope, to look at what goes on up there a little bit deeper than one or two weeks.
I mean, I spoke to them, they said they want to do one or two week max on their thing, they don't do that. No, I, no, I, no, I asked if their company does it, and they said, no, they don't. I called and asked, and I spoke to them on the phone about it.
Okay, but regardless
Okay, how about this? Could we have the police department do an investigation on it and see what they can find into the supposed theft that could occur?
That's, that's not my decision.
I just want to see your thoughts.
I'm not going to comment on whether they should do something like that, that's not my
Well, I mean, you had commented it shouldn't be done, I'm just asking what are your thoughts on that all?
I'm talking about the audit, I'm not talking about an investigation, I would never comment on that.
Chief, is that something that the police department could do within the thefts?
On the alleged theft, that was already charged for, from what I'm thinking, there was, I don't want to get into, because if you want to talk to Joel, but from what I was understanding is Jeff went to the ice skating rink and found 17 bags of money in different locations. So if you want an investigation, I have attorney general's office, I, the FBI, AG, ATF, the FSB, all in our office on a weekly basis. I can advise, but that would be, again, I'd give you guys, is the AG's office, I can have them take a look at it, and maybe they can do their final audit on, on, on the book.
But that's not, that's not, that's not committing anything, I just say, hey, here's what we have, what is your suggestion, if they would do it or not?
I would need a formal complaint, knowing what money's missing, because I don't know what money's missing. And I don't know without forensic audit, they can down the other, would, would
Would or not, it'd be after, they'd do some research.
But I would then come to the attorney general's office, and then they would pay, says on how they get the receipt.
I mean, I say we should at least go that route, because it's not, we're not committing to a forensic audit. They're going to do their research and see if it's necessary, if that's correct or not.
Chief, I got a question, you and I spoke, and I have slightly spoke. You guys did an investigation, you know which people you met, you, and I think you have two people in line right now, okay? 17 bags of 32, okay? Jeffrey, the bags, if somebody's going to rob us, they work on open that bag, or they would take in the bag, correct, normally? They don't open the bag up, take 20 bucks out, leave the rest of it, and take the bag?
I mean, certain individuals, if they're stealing from, let's just to say, it would be a business, they'll take money over time, so you don't steal a lot of money missing.
I don't know how much money was in those bags, I don't even know anything about it.
I just don't, some of the bags in different locations, you know, it's
When you say different, it makes me, Jeff, when I spoke to Carl, the manager, okay? He indicated on the weekends, Fridays, and so forth, in the different shifts, they shift that bag from each department, from the admissions to the snack bar. There's this accumulation, because you mentioned 17, the audit thinks there's 17 days without a deposit, that's not accurate though.
There was admissions, snack bar, there was the pro shop. And then after I was all done and all counted up, and it came down to be recounted by treasury, there was another bag somewhere else found, I don't know, I searched everywhere, I looked everywhere.
But you
I found another bag somewhere up the rink somewhere, I looked everywhere, I didn't, I don't know where
We were looking.
Correct, and I said, but it came back down, and there was another bag somewhere, I said, where that came from, I don't know. And I didn't know we were missing anything, there were missing bags, so it went to, it came back down.
Now, since then
Working with Carl
Since then, we've made a lot of changes, right?
We've made changes.
Working, but you and I spoke, you and I spoke, okay? Carl and I spoke about every other day or every day, because I've been changing this at work. But I'm getting at, okay? People make statements and they're, because I know the employees up there are very upset because they feel that they're being targeted, they're doing something wrong, they're stealing. Because the way the statements were being made, they're implying that they don't mention nobody. So I know they're upset about it, okay? But the 17 bags, that's when Carl went down, ordered the whole system. I knew there was multi-bags, but I realized between the concessions and the admissions, that was separate bags, and that's where all the key issue of the bags come from, that's number one. Now, like I said
That must have been six days, that should have been six days. Could have been six days. I guess what I had to ask councilor, I'd sort of be, the money that was in the bags, were there receipts, where they entered into the cash register? And if you have the receipts and the money matches, then you're good.
I was up through this morning, I sit down, I watched Carl look through the whole system again. Okay, it isn't there, okay. Uh, yes, there's a slip file out, a dealer slip for that shift, okay? All the money's counted, one thing was done, they changed, they used to make an individual deposit, now they're done combined. Kevin decided that these are for them also, okay? But yes, those slips were in there, okay?
But we're talking after the fact. If the 17 bags, if the money matched, what is
He refers to the 17 bags, there's no issue with the 17 bags on the where, okay?
So they, that all
The slips were in there.
But, but, but I'm saying, so there was alleged theft, but we, we don't want to make a confirmed statement or that or not. But why don't we just have the investigation, the investigation will see if there was or was not. It's not costing us anything, if they think it should be further, they'll let us know. If there's nothing to be found, then there's nothing to be found then.
Well, I think, yeah, that's what you need to do then.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, but we need to, I mean, okay, so I make an informed motion that the police department does a further investigation on the ice skating rink and the alleged thefts. Do I have a second?
Well, no.
Will you just agree with that?
Let me finish, please.
Oh, right ahead.
Okay, we know there was a theft.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's stop it there. Now, the money bags are where you go through, and then you determine if there's an issue or not. Please, okay? Because we already have the two. Now we don't allege any visual stuff, you know, there were clues, that's what they're upset about. I'll explain to them, like, something's wrong. And we don't even know, say, there's 17 bags, that there was an issue. So, so at this point, and I agree with you, because, because you can't go back and replicate what was in the 17 bags.
But we should have the receipts though, correct?
If there was receipts.
And if they, if they match up with some other type of tracking evidence.
The slips are in, the cash register, the slips are in every bag, Jeff, you were there.
I'm assuming we still have those receipts, correct?
Make sure all been turned in.
That's what I'm saying, we should, so we should still have the receipts, not just for the 17 bags, but the course of the
Turned into the police office, and they left them since around, there was a problem, the, obviously, you know, it's all the slips.
Yeah, that was like the money that
The money was probably that.
So, you know, at this point, you can go look at, you know, chief, go look at the procedures that need to be placed now, but you can't replicate what the procedures were back then.
Well, I'm just saying about
Jeff, did you count the money, was the money that you counted in the bags, if they match up with the receipts? They did not. There was a problem, there was, with the cash register, the money didn't add up to what the receipt said. I believe the kids were having problems with their cash register. Either a cash register or what they were writing down, there was a problem between receipt and paper and cash. I counted everything in the bags, it was brought down here by Carl, so that money matched what I counted, I mean
The receipts did not, not all the bags?
Everything, everything, everything didn't match up. It didn't match up from receipt to paper to cash, didn't match up. I brought down what was counted, I mean, I, all of that was counted. So moving on though, since then, safe, cash register, safeguards, I mean, everything's been done, I mean, there's been a lot done to change
So part of the problem with that then, with not matching up was, my understanding is cash register wasn't working.
I mean, there was, dude, listen, not, not true, I'm, Joe, I don't think so, I think the kids were screwing up, I think the kids were screwing up, but I said, since then, there's a safe, like, if there's a safeguard that this drives to put in place, that kids don't leave unless they're valid. There's no more leaving without being, there's no more
So there's been a lot of negotiation, right? So what I suggested is
Well, I, Lisa, from working at the bank, if, if something did not match up, what would be the procedure? Like, is it just, okay, we'll make it better, or is this like, hey, you got to account for why they're, why?
It's never okay.
Well, I'm saying, but like, we, like you just said, things were not matching up. But now we, we have changed it since, but it doesn't change the fact that if there's money missing, the taxpayers have a right to get that money returned. At least we could look into it to see if there was money missing. So we're not going to know unless there's an investigation, I'm just saying, can we
Let him do it?
That's what I'm saying, I asked for the vote, I'm asking for a second.
Well, you, you, you can tell the chief, you can do it, you want to investigate?
Okay, chief, let's investigate it then, that was very sensitive.
I'll refer to, just so you know where I would refer, I would look into it. Mayor, I will refer out to you right now.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. How much would a forensic audit cost for that?
Twenty-five to $100,000.
Okay, as a taxpayer, I'm sitting here thinking, if we're going to do a forensic audit over a couple of 17 bags at the skating rink snack bar, I'm going to be pissed off.
Well, I mean, with all due respect
I understand that you want to find out where the money went, and you want to remedy that not happening, but I am not looking to go $25,000 plus deep into something that could have been a lot more simple than that.
Well, and going back to what you said about forensic audit for the police department, there was figure issues there that we couldn't
Was anyone, well, no one was charged at the time, like you said, right? There was no one charged at the time, when you said the forensic audit should have been done? Was there? But let's just move on, there's no point in going back, because chief's going to investigate it, it's going to be moved on. Let's be someone to talk about. All right, sounds wonderful. All right, moving on to the F-150 update, chief, I'm going to do a quick update, we're out on the truck.
You have a question, sir?
F-150, the folks at council, I know you're here, I understand, and they were offering $52,000 on the dollars. I think it would be better, like, maybe the definition is a question of 55 for that vehicle. I know it's, you know, $2,500 price, I think we should just make it $55.
All right, so, I mean, I support the chief's about 55, I mean
Is there a big question I've got, chief? Can't you take a broker 53 and a half, split the difference up like that for the hassle?
Possibly, but I, I think if we save the 55, it's
I'm looking at the time, please, to, to call back up and make a deal.
All right, so in the meantime, we'll have the chief do that. And in the process, can we make a vote also, so as he's doing that, also look into our vehicle replacements? So when that vehicle's longer in our fleet, the next vehicle is in the works of getting made, slash, when we get that money, it'd be assisted, everyone will pay with that as well?
I don't really want to pay.
We're waiting for council's vote when we talk. Chief, does that help you, sir?
Yes, thank you.
All right, all right, so moving on to the basement rental fee. Last meeting, Rose to a new, Rose to a new you came and said how they'd be interested in doing that. The council said that's a great idea, but we never came up with an actual fee to rent out, not the whole basement, but rooms of the basement. So before we can, you know, sign a contract with them or anyone else in the future, we got to come up with some type of a rental fee to charge for renting a room in the basement.
You had mentioned, Joel, that you have $300, what's the square footage of that yet?
You mean for the, you mean I mean, I mean, I remember them saying like the most they were able to pay, like I said, but their nonprofit goal is to give out to the less needy of food, clothing, and things like that. I mean, I mean, please, correct me if I'm wrong, like, the only thing they're going to really have using electricity wise is refrigerator, correct?
Uh, right now, there's a deep freezer, but we are looking for fridge as well.
Yeah, so a deep freezer and refrigerator. So I mean, I think a fair price to start off, that we can revisit later on. I mean, maybe $100 a room and go from there, to see how the cost is. I mean, I mean, in the other side, there's no one beating the door down to rent out a room in our basement either, so. I didn't know anyone, what, all right. Nate, $100 a room and revisit, revisit in, we'll say, six months? Jim? All right, so I'll make a motion to anyone who wishes to rent a room in the basement at a $100, $100 fee per room to be reviewed every six months, so I have a second?
I'll send it.
Question.
Oh.
Why somewhere come up with square footage of different sizes rooms now?
Yeah. Well, if we, if we want to, if the people are beating the door down to rent the rooms out, then we can revisit that as well.
I have a question too, this is going to be a lease, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah, we'll do it for six months and revisit and see if they're still happy, and see if we're still happy. Yeah, all right, so I made a motion, do I have a second?
Ister, seven, yes.
Yes, Lauren Hart.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to Life 360 app, so we discussed that last council meeting with having all city's cell phones, whether they are the city workers or ourselves, uh, they have the Life 360 app, so we know where our uh, devices are at, just in case they get lost, misplaced. So, if there is an incident, we know who's close by that we can call them and say, hey, we need you here at this location.
Did you talk to Joel about that, did Joel get some news or anything about the 360?
I, I haven't spoke to Joel, Joel didn't say anything to me about it, I mean.
So, there is like a concern with the 360, that does turn out to be that, Joe, most of our phones can't be like the find your phone kind of thing that everybody's worried about? Just worry about it being lost or?
Well, I mean, yes and no, so the find your phones, like if your phone is still on and working, so if your phone dies, gets broken, stolen, whatever.
Do you think the 360 is on there?
Yeah, well, the Life 360 will actually show you like where you, where, where you have gone and things like that. I mean, like a.
Who'll have access to that?
So, there you go. Well, I just make it be council, I mean, I, I would just make it council or the city clerk or whoever, whoever council team's fit to have the access to it. Supervisor? Other, the, the council.
And then what limitations are you gonna put on it so that it can't be used because somebody, somewhere along the line?
What do you mean?
If the app is thinking about something or?
What do you mean by, I don't know if you're referring to by use, I don't know if that makes sense.
I just, I, I mean, if like, someone's at a doctor appointment and it's not in the calendar or it's not, I don't know, I'd like, the point of the extent, I think if, if we're gonna use 360, the extent of how it's going to be used needs to be spelled out for everybody.
I mean, the app that I have with my family is free. I mean, there's different upgrades if you wanna get more in-depth details on things like that, but, I mean, what we have is the free app, it's, you know, it shows where you've gone and where you're at.
Is that too bad, I don't know how that would work, how would that?
Yeah, that, that was the, that was the legal question Joel had in concern was more of the off-duty aspect of.
I mean, when I, like I said, with my city phone, like, when I'm done, it's at my house, on my counter, you know, if something goes off, I read it, but it's not like, you know, if I'm going to the store, I don't take it with me.
Yeah, but, I mean, like.
I technically do mine sometimes first all the time.
Yeah, like.
I mean, I mean, that's your choice.
I, I'll take it to the doctor's office, I take it to my in-laws, I take it wherever I'm going, and I know Jeff takes his with, with a lot of places too.
I'm just, I'm just trying to break down, you have a handful of those names.
It might be a procedure thing that needs to be spelled out, I really don't know, that's, Joel's not here, I can't really.
I just have a question, because exactly, you mean, because like you have.
Because the only time it's gonna be reviewed, it has to be reviewed. I mean, if you're tracking someone for a reason, I mean, you're tracking someone for a reason, but like, like I said, remember, these are taxpayer.
There's other reasons we're tracking someone, we are, we don't need 360.
Well, there's, yeah, you know, once, once you go into it, you're into it. So, it's valuable.
So, maybe it does need to just be a procedure before we do anything, you know what I mean?
We, we have a cell phone policy.
I know, I know we have, I know we don't, I know we have like a technology one, like what you can do on your phone, I don't think there's actual specifically cellphone policy.
There's, there's a lot of policies, you know, about cell phones in use, there's higher school, so, you know. If you start tracking, it's not a reason to track. I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm saying that, you know, you know, when you ask them. I think this whole thing, not seem to lose it. So, you know, that's why you put a cell phone policy in place, and somebody loses their phone, they're responsible for it. Yeah, but I don't know if you, you, you know, if you start setting more restrictions or more things in place to track people, especially employees, can get, uh, a little, or, or, worry some about, you know, whether, you know, you're looking at him as if there's something wrong, or.
Well, if you're doing nothing wrong, you have nothing to worry about.
That's not crazy.
We'll just table to ask the big opinion of our solicitor, do I have a second to table?
Savage. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes. Uh, just another announcement here, we do need, uh, we're in need of volunteers for the following boards. Zoning, uh, one, one individual for a three-year term, hard, two individuals, one must be an architect and one for the Board of Appeals. Moving on to new business, uh, Mr. Backer.
It's, we just have the, in your, in your packets, the bidding documents that we wanna put out for the street paving projects. If anybody has any questions or concerns before we start the process. If you ask me any questions, I can help you guys. Even with my glasses, it's very tiny. But you guys.
No question.
Okay. And I just think that informal mention is.
Savage, yes. Roche's, yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Barnhart, you're up, sir.
I think to make the motion to approve the second reading of the business district ordinance.
I'll say. I'm the central business district ordinance.
Right, one seventy-five forty-two, one seventy-five forty-three, one seventy-five forty-four, one seventy-five forty-six, and forty-seven.
Ister, say.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister. Savage, yes. Roche's, yes.
Yes.
Uh, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
I make the motion to approve the hiring of Vince Jaeger. Uh, looked into his budget, I'll work with Jeff, where insurance is, he's gonna be full-time, sixteen dollars an hour. Uh, he won't be getting any benefits until he does his ninety days, that's approved with that, so I'd like to make the motion to hire Vince Jaeger.
Stackin.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage, yes. Roche's, yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to the vent, uh, Penn Valley Airport contract, uh, this is a yearly thing that we pay the air, uh, the airport of twenty-one hundred dollars, this is in the budget. Sean, what's his start date? I'm sorry.
Uh, it's Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, thank you. Any question on the Penn Valley Airport contract? I made the motion, you say.
Savage, yes. Roche's, yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Uh, uh, yes, thank you, uh, moving on to Little League softball, I know Little League softball reached out. I know they've been to a few meetings of Parks and Rec, uh, they're looking to help rehab the Hamilton baseball slash softball field out there in Hamilton to try to update that field so it's in better use for, uh, the softball teams here. Uh, we have, uh, Steve Wren from the Little League softball, if anyone has any questions for him or what their intentions are, kind of like what the school district did with the John O'Long field. They just need, uh, a council vote, so when they go to apply for grants, the, the grantee, the grantor knows that this, they know that we are aware of the changes that, or the upgrades that are going on the field, so they just need to have a letter from us similar to what came from when we did for the Shikamie School District for the John O'Long. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Wren back there and what their plans may be or anything like that?
You know, the question I have is, is Fort Recreation on board.
Yeah, they're on R B D, they're.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you, Mr. Ister and Randy, I don't know if anybody else is here for the Parks and Rec. Over the last several years, they've been a great asset for the Little League. Brian Updegro was here, he's the president of the Little League softball. Uh, but this grant specifically is written for the Hamilton field out there, that's kind of been vacant. I know Vince, uh, softball used to be pretty big, slow pitch softball, that's kind of died out. Uh, and then, you know, because, because I've enjoyed a lot of moments there, as a lot of people in our community have, uh, just, uh, it's hard to make at times to see the field and the condition it's in because, you know, Darwin Clock, we've been working on the field for sixty-plus years. You know, he's getting older and has, you know, has some health things. So, I just kind of wanted to keep the thing going for our community because I know growing up, uh, definitely provided a lot of entertainment for people over the years, so, uh, in conjunction with the Little League, uh, I'm, I'm kind of taking a lead on getting the field playable and things, and then my thought is over time, a lot of youngsters will be able to use that field, and, uh, we just wanna upgrade it, I mean, there's a lot of the facilities there, dugouts, uh, you know, just overall upkeep of the field is in need, so, we did write a grant, I wasn't even sure if we had to be here, uh, but, you know, I've never done anything like this before, so I figured I'd just show up and talk to it, answer any questions, and hopefully hand in the grant, but, uh, found out that's not gonna be the case, I have to go to Applebaum's office to hand it in.
And, Mr. Wren, if you need any volunteers, Jeff can hook you up with some volunteers that can help.
Thank you.
Do some things to help.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Not interestingly, be constricted by, they'll help you.
And I know, I know.
You have people to maintain it then too, after you saw?
Yeah, so, uh, fortunately I live right there, so, uh, I always drive them by, I mean, I've helped, as you guys know, Darwin Pony, I've helped him over the years, every time I see him out there, I kind of stop in and maybe just see if he needs a hand, but I really think he does need a hand at this point. So, I'm kind of willing to step up and do that, at least, you know, for this year and a few years to come, and then maybe pass the torch at some point, but I would love to see that field back up and operational again and in good shape for, and it's, I know, uh, Mr. Roche said softball, but uh, it, there'll be baseball there, softball there, and all different age groups. So, I think it is a valuable thing for our community, I hate to see it kind of, you know, just disintegrate and kind of go away at some point, so, uh, so that's why we're here.
I'm gonna thank you gentlemen, because all the fields are slowly coming back. Your field out there is the last one in the lineup, but, you know, the, of course, the John O'Long is major renovations, and all the other little fields around there in the complex are being worked on.
And that's a credit to the Parks and Rec board, because when we first went there two years ago, uh, I know Mr. Ister was huge in helping us out. You know, we weren't sure if we were even gonna be able to pull it off with, you know, summer youth baseball versus Shikamie Little League, and, uh, you know, with their help, and of course, the representatives from Shikamie Little League kind of came together, and, yeah, you go there in the, this summer and it'll be packed and kids playing and having a good time again, so. That's exactly what we needed, and hopefully be the same thing out of here.
The consolidation worked out good.
Yes, I agree.
I like that one thing, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I will just bring up, we probably had a, we had a tournament last year, it was an all-store tournament, we brought in multiple teams from the area, it was a softball tournament at the John O'Long and the Phillips Field, uh, we used those too. And I just wanna say that the, the city was absolutely wonderful and had, let, in, in cooperation on running it. Um, we actually had a flat tire on a four-wheeler, one of the city guys came helping me do it, I went over to Carl, um, at the, at the shed and, and he gave me some tools to take it off, I got the tire fixed and the, the garbage removal and stuff like that, we had a T-tag trucks that, that, sitting down there to, every night we took the garbage and got rid of it and it was disposed of, um. So, I, I, overall, it was a great experience, and all, many, I told Mr. Ister this at the Parks and Rec, but just so the other council member in the community can hear, is that it absolutely, the teams coming in gave multiple compliments of how nice it was to play at this facility and, and have that experience for their kids playing there, we had anywhere from ten years old up to twelve years olds, uh, multiple teams from different communities, so, thank you.
We have a pretty complex.
You do.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, so I'll make the motion to send a letter of support written up by their solicitor, similar to the one of the Shikamie, the School District, to the Little League, they can do their upgrades, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Ister, yes. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on here, uh, summer kickoff line item, I mean, Victoria briefly, uh, discussed that in her public comment. So, basically, as you know, I'm in that group who, um, has started that, uh, the summer kickoff for the last two years, looking to do it for a third year. Um, as Victoria said, the communication was not well at the last meeting, so I'm, I'm gonna try to do better this time around. So, basically, over the last two years, we have fundraised, uh, money to put in the line item to continue to do the event, so basically, the group is asking that whether the money be released or as we get bills in, that we can use that line item money to continue to do that, that we, that we, uh, wanna do this year as well down by the river. So, I don't know if there's any questions on that, or?
That's not city money, that's money you guys.
That's money that we raised over the last two years, that is correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just curiosity, I'll ask the question now since I did earlier, but the New Year's Eve money that you had, um, from what I understand, there wasn't enough money from what you raised for New Year's Eve, you gotta take five hundred dollars out of your thirty-five hundred that you get every year, is that true?
Well, I don't, I don't know what thirty-five hundred dollars.
You get thirty-five hundred dollars a year, your fund, you can do whatever you want with.
Oh, yeah, so that's how a lot of the stuff is paid for, that different ones like, so for example, uh, the new, I mean, right now our New Year's Eve budget is zero.
Right.
And, uh, there is, I'm trying to think, I can't even get the name, I can, not, I cannot, marketing, marketing, and there wasn't enough money in there in twenty-twenty for New Year's Eve when to cover some of the costs, so I chose to take it out of marketing, I wanted to take it out of twenty-twenty-four marketing, treasurer chose not to and took it out of twenty-twenty-five budget instead. But regardless, you were correct, there wasn't enough money in there, so we had to take, had to take it out of another thing, marketing fund that I have.
So, just saying down the road, and I'm not saying this is gonna happen, I don't wish it to happen, don't take me the wrong way, but suppose that you're not the mayor anymore, and you don't have that budget and you don't make that money, where's it gonna come from to pay for these people?
You, I mean, that comes down, whoever chooses to do it next, like, they have the fundraiser for, like, as we did for all these other things, like getting sponsorships, building relationships with businesses, individuals who wanna volunteer, and that's what, I mean, and that's what, and that's what we have tried to do throughout the years. But, you know, as everyone knows who does events, like, there's only so much money to go around through businesses, and the businesses that do donate, they're very generous. But once again, you know, as everyone knows, the cost of goods are going up, so that's less that they can give out.
Right, so you wanna, you wanna take that ban for fifteen thousand dollars, and you have eight thousand dollars in your account.
No, 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 so like this, this, the summer kickoff line item, like, that was designated for the summer kickoff, that's totally different from New Year's Eve. Does that make sense? So.
Right, like, right now you have eight thousand dollars on your line item left in that fund to pay for that.
There's, there's, there's money in a special account where it is that people, that has been donated to the city for this function.
Yeah, from the different sponsorships and vendor fees and things that we have done, so.
That money is sitting in a special account.
Is it enough to pay the fifteen thousand dollars?
I have no idea what the, what the cost is gonna be for the, uh, for the function. Um, what I can tell you is this, that, um, last year, I don't believe there's something like, uh, that.
I, I don't know, like, we submitted the bills to treasurer.
So, anyway, you know, because it's a city function, it ran under the city amount, the city picked up whatever the cost was.
Right.
Whether, you know, whether you agree or disagree with that, that's the way it works.
Right.
The money that's sitting in the special account now, what that'll do is, that will be used, it could be used first to pay for any bills that come through that are made out to the city this summer. Now, you know, I, I, I don't want to get into politics of whether somebody should have a, uh, final one C three or some type of organization that the city is financing then, if, if, you know.
I'm just gonna say like, after this money, like, there'll be no ties anymore with that.
I understand that, so, I think the cleanest way, and you can jump in any time you want, the cleanest way would be that if there are, if there are bills related to a function and the city is willing to pay for these bills, the first thing we would use would be the money out of the special account.
Yeah, that's what, and that's.
One stack is gone.
Then there's, then everything falls back on the group to do everything else.
Then whatever happens, happens after that, and if the city chooses to support any of that, that would be something that would have to come to a vote.
Correct, and we're, and we're just saying, we're not asking, like, we just, we just like to have this money, so we, the one that we fundraised for.
The reason they say that is because the fundraising was done specifically for this project, and you even gave money for that. It was when you give money for a specific project, you pretty much wanna keep it in that project.
Correct.
Or you won't get people to donate.
Correct, and that's what we wanna do.
So, um, you know, I don't think luxury is there to use that money for anything else, I would say you use it for what we're talking about.
And that's what we wanna do.
Once, once council approves it, you know, but that's up to you, you try it out there.
I agree that bills should maybe pay us that transfer the money.
That, that's fine.
There should be no transfers.
No, no, that's fine, like, we, we just wanna know, as we get bills in, can we do that in the city, that's all we wanna do, and once that, once the money is gone, then everything else falls back on the. Yes, correct, yes.
But another thing is, to make sure there were the money spent more than what was appropriate. So, at one point in time, we thought that money coming in would have taken, made the city whole, but I think we're past that point. Well, wait, I said, what happened last year has nothing to do with what's happening this year. So, you know, there's an X amount of money, and I'm gonna use an example. Well, I remember that, that's taxpayer's money, but we're, I think, it takes more effort to go back. Anybody that says the city offers the taxpayer a way to look at it, whether it's donated or not, it's, it's, it's a city. So, based on that, I understand, you stand, but you choose that there was a shortfall, money, money can.
Yeah, it's like, when, yeah, it's, it's not appropriate.
Right.
It's already, the money's already.
Right.
Right, yeah, and that's the problem.
That's very well true, you're probably bad, and it's that-
It's already one, so, it's just like, sure.
So once you both pay the bills, it doesn't matter, it's not, you can't deficit spend, you can still read the budget and spend.
But I also do, I think, makes, in fact, there's one thing, is spend plenty of that, because it's the only sign that reports aren't done.
Right.
Okay?
Kevin has all the bills.
And this is my point, I think it should be the responsibility of the person doing the event, to make sure it turns in a financial statement after the event's done, how much money's taken, what was paid out, where, how, and so forth. And because, back to being transparent, no different chief, no different situations at the ring, you're counting money bags, and same situation there. So it's responsibility of the person running it, you have to turn that in.
So the simplest way to correct that is-
Which was it done, pardon?
Simple way to correct that, or make sure that happens, is when you make the motion to do this, you put that as part of the motion, saying that the financial report has to be given at the end of the, before the end of the event, not just Josh.
Anybody.
Anybody, anybody, so when you're doing this, you just make that part of the motion in order for them to have the funds.
That's fine, that's fine, that's your question.
I'm skipping the money part.
Okay.
I have a problem with the perception part, because did you just use the example, I think I heard you, that what happens when you're not here, and then if somebody else does it, or if that group doesn't do it?
I didn't use, someone else asked me on the last, but-
Well, it doesn't matter who does it, it's up to city council to either
I'm not, I'm not talking about the money part, I'm going back to that, I'm not talking about financially, I'm talking about perceptually, we still have a bit of a dilemma of who's doing the event, so if this summer kickoff ends up going away from the city, because we removed and pay down the line item, to a zero out, whatever happened last year and years prior, now whose event is it?
I mean, if the city shall continue to, I mean, the city itself, if they want to do it, that's fine, like, the group, we're still happy to try to continue to do it. I mean, that's what we're, that's-
So it's not a city event anymore, it's whoever runs it?
So I think you look at, just like any other event that goes on the city, if somebody, like, uh-
You're great.
It's by Chris Booker. So if you want to do something like that, you know, whether, whether his group is still involved in this, or somebody takes it over, it's something that still has to come back to council for approval to do. And if this is a city function, per se, as somebody put their name on it, council put their name on it, then at that point, it's a matter of whether council's gonna approve it or disapprove it to be allowed to be used down there. I suspect-
I'm very specifically pointing to the fact that this is being removed as a city event, by means of finances, and then what happens when it stops happening?
I know you said that, you know, it's not about finance, it's better things about finance. It's all about the money portion of make sure that you are able to afford to do something like this, whether, whether they're doing it, or somebody else is doing it, it still comes down to a matter of money, can you afford to do it? And who's gonna be responsible? If someone else takes it over and they do it privately, well then, at that point, that's their responsibility.
And then what's the perception, because I started with that, yeah, that's, the perception is that the, the city event failed, because it had been a city event, see, I get, I get in the weeds there.
But I don't think, I don't think anybody's saying the city event failed, I think, I think-
If it doesn't happen because they don't have the money, they sure do say that.
Or like, we're not saying we didn't have the money, we're just asking that the money that we have in there, that we can use it this year for the event. It's like anything, like, we helped fundraise the money for the event.
To me, it appears that after this, it's gonna become more of a
Pride event.
Project that's taken on by someone else, not so much the city funding it.
Right.
So the money that's there is gonna go to pay the bills first, once the money is gone, that's gonna be, you know, intentional upon, you know, them making sure that they have the proper donations, or they have the money coming in.
Correct.
So it's Valley Fusion?
And that's the question I asked all the way to Fusion, is are these cities that he assisted by Valley Fusion, or are you representing Valley Fusion? Because at this point, you, you're not representing folks.
You're correct, okay.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay.
Wait, how much is the city owed for last year?
I don't know that, I mean-
There is no money owed for last year, last year's books were closed, you can't deficit spend. That's what you're saying, what you're saying-
Well, then we'll file a write-to-know, I mean, that's, that's simple.
You're saying yes, you're saying no. Well, there is a shortfall, like you said, we're not going back.
There is for New Year's.
There was a shortfall in that project, I'm saying it wasn't. Okay, but, but here's a question, but the problem is, is that you, you were ready, as a council approved, when a shortfall, today. The question was, now I'm not sure what the dollar value is to get down.
It's like fourteen thousand.
It's like fifteen thousand, okay. Whatever. The money's taken out basically, okay? They have the event, and they make another fifteen thousand out sitting in the pot. Next year, they come along and say, we don't want to do that next year, we're gonna take that money and go do something else.
Okay.
But money's not coming back for a while.
Well, that's, that's the point, that's the straw.
Sure, sure.
Wait. But that's, that's a council decision this year.
I'm just asking for the money so we can pay for it this year, that we fundraise.
So you'll have all your own insurances in place, that the city's only responsible for any other?
Correct, yes.
Like, they would be-
It's like any other event that goes on.
Correct, yes. Okay, so, any other questions? Alright, so- Alright, so I'm just gonna make a motion, trying to come up with this, that any summer kickoff expenditure can be paid through the summer kickoff line item. Does that sound correct to you?
Up to the extent-
Uh, what's in the account, yes?
My inquiry is a fund, not a line item.
Excuse me, a fund.
How the fund, how the special account?
Fund. So that expenditures for the summer kickoff can be paid through the summer kickoff fund.
So the money you made from the bingo out there, did you put that in the account?
That had nothing, that had nothing to do with this.
Because when you advertised it, it said you were giving half of the money to the K nine unit?
I, I, like I said, we're still cozying out expenditures on those things, so we had to wait five days for the bank to release the money.
When you say, you say on that thing.
Yeah, so, yeah, there will be a donation made back, we don't, we'll just fit-
And the rest of it you'll use towards-
The, the advance, yes. Yes.
Math ain't mathin'.
Okay, what is your math, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do apologize. What was shortfall last year, that I understand what I'm making up for?
I'll, I'll try to provide a point of clarity, so there was a budget last year, the bottom-line budget number doesn't matter, the expenditure was over by eighty-four hundred dollars.
Okay.
So it was over expended by eighty-four hundred dollars, but the, the reality is, I mean, we had a static budget, as an operating budget, is tend, tends to be pretty static, right, but the council had voted to pay to pay the bills, to pay, yeah, to pay the bills, so when, when council voted to, when it's like, you know, and coming up, it'll say to vote for bills in the general fund, or private grants, whatever, it was over by eighty-four hundred dollars, but council was already putting that money to the event in the way that it voted to pay the bills.
So just so I want to start, there was an eighty-four hundred dollar deficit.
Yes.
It's been balanced, or paid, or whatever, it's been done, but now there's money that is left, even though we're not, we already closed out last year, so we're not using this year's money to pay last year's debt, but we're asking for that money to go-
What we have is money in a special account that's there.
From what?
The special account is not a part of the line item budget that we approved.
I understand that, where did it come from?
Donations.
That were specifically earmarked for the event.
Yes.
Since last year's event?
I would say yes.
New, new donations that are for this year's event, not last year's event?
I would say yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, because you're asking if there's twenty, if there's twenty-five dollars, twenty-four dollars, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-
Correct, yes, yes, yes.
You're right.
Yep.
And that money to reserve because it's in a special account. So, you know, the only thing I would say about the ration basis is that, you know, the money, the money that you spend, it might be up to you, not a lot of-
You're correct, a hundred percent agree, a hundred percent agree, everything else that falls under our, yes.
I would like to see, it's not responsible.
Correct, yes, what's Ben just said in that motion, I'll make that one.
Isn't it an interest-bearing thing?
I don't know what Kevin has to say.
I'm sure it is, or, or, I think that's a requirement, so, but, you know, the small amount, it's just that you're-
Yeah, you're gonna get peanut, you're gonna-
You're still gonna pay up to the amount, I mean, that's a deal now.
Alright, so I got it, I make the motion, go, I have a second. Alright, so-
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Thank you, moving on, Councilman Reiser, city hall model upgrade, I mean, change.
Yes, we have a change order Pepco. After our last meeting downstairs, we walked down, this is mine, for some, uh, these, actually, for the quiet and modification. I told the change order to make that, uh, sex. That was mostly counters, relocation, doors, and decorative office, and glass shifty, and so forth, that's where she gets the rights. You have it in your hand, can you just tell me?
I think as soon as they get the change order approved, then they can-
Come on, come on, tomorrow morning, you know, I'll be here.
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Savage.
I would like to see the approval to advertise it for an assistant position, full-time in the treasurer's office, and I will make that in part of my motion.
Roche's, yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Savage.
Yeah.
Ister.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, uh-
Advertising.
Yeah.
Treasurer.
I don't have time, it's you, do, do we have to, do we have to do that?
I mean, I don't think we have to, I just think we've all done it, so everyone's aware of what's going on in the department, so for example, when John advertised a month ago, say, hey, I'm advertising for part-time, full-time, what we did with the police officers, hey, we're advertising for the same thing, we'll be standing on D P W. It's just, visit-
It's not, it's called like, you know, it's like-
Well, he knows, tell him if he comes to meetings, he would have heard it, he would have heard it. Keep going, Councilman Savage.
I would also like to make a, a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of one hundred eight thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents, liquid fuels in the amount of two hundred ninety dollars, and payroll in the amount of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Ister. Barnhart. Martina.
Roche's. Yes. Discussion topics, Mr. Back, Flo Hester.
So, CD Main Street Matters, that's what the facade grant is under now, I'm just going off the twenty-twenty-four, because the twenty-five has not been used in guidelines. But that grant opens last year, September third, in line to October, it's assuming it's around that time this year. So, the grant itself, you can, as a total, you cannot exceed a hundred thousand dollars as far as our application will go. You can, applicants must provide documents for facade funding, including name, addresses, and estimated project cost. As well, we have established program boundaries, design standards, defined eligible applicant activities, and policies and procedures. Each applicant, or, I guess, actually, sub-applicants, whoever, a property owner, they can only ask for ten thousand dollars, and it is a dollar-for-dollar match, so if they get the max of ten, they would owe ten, and it's twenty thousand dollars property. Now, I have talked to S R I specifically about Main Street Matters program in totality. A lot of what we're doing as far as community blueprints goes, really kind of coincides with a lot of things that can be done in Main Street Matters program. I, I'm not sure as far as collaborative, collaborative effort with S R I, if we're we're on second base, and if we go for a facade, we're on, you know, at home, and we skip third, it's one of those conversations that we need to have, you know, speaking on it a little bit.
Yeah, so what we're doing with Blueprint Communities is coming up with a five-year strategic plan for downtown revitalization. And part of that plan might include, in fact, a facade program. What I'm saying is that if we could work together and get on the same timeline, I think we would get a better return, and better, a more effective revitalization program than if, say, the city went on their own, we get the facade now, versus doing it later. Also, we are, we have a plan in place for getting our Main Street designation. What the Main Street designation will do, if you've read the guidelines, you'll see that it does change the match requirement. And so for some of those things, it might be better to wait until we have the Main Street designation. Now, that timeline for Main Street designation, it gets complicated, because we also applied for the Appalachian Regional Commission to start our downtown management program. We want to take advantage of that program for the first three years, get us very ready to be competitive for the designation, then we apply for designation, which is in itself a five-year designation, which puts you on a priority for getting approved for these other Main Street grant programs and other D C E D programs. This is a long-term plan, so it, I think, is, it behooves us to get together on the same page and agree on what our timeline is, and what we should be going for when. I think that, I, I understand your enthusiasm for going after this grant, and I know that S R I has applied for this grant in the past, and they actually had difficulty getting enough business owners or property owners to participate, to put in a good competitive application. Maybe it would be a good idea for whatever council members are interested in, and city administrator, the downtown Sunbury team, get together with Main Street Matters, with our D C E D regional director, and, and talk about what's the best path forward. Because I think there's a way that you can really maximize and leverage all the programs that they have, if you kind of follow a plan and a timeline that, that does that for you. So that's just what I want to present to you, and for something for consideration. Remember that we do have a meeting coming up, March fourth, and that has to do with getting on the same page, moving forward together for downtown revitalization. And so if we can, you know, this might be a good topic to talk about then, or at least have that discussion about what our overall strategic plan is and timeline for the downtown revitalization, so that we can work together in sync.
Thank you, Joe. So, when you talked about the Main Street designations and the different matching, if you're in Elm Street, the project requirement is a match of ten percent of total project, and if you're designated a Main Street program, the match is twenty-five percent. So, you know, there's different requirements as far as the match can go down, if there's a designation going through first, specifically for that.
And Derek, you were able to put forth the invitation for the upcoming-
March fourth.
March fourth, which is two weeks from tomorrow. Because it's crucial that we have the four, five different efforts for the grants that are available through Blueprint Community, like, we have got to discuss these things, and be organized in doing so, so that we can maximize all the financial benefits and organizational benefits, so that we can all stand to gain from it.
Is that one P M, right?
One P M to four P M at the Eldorado Center.
Any question now, Mr. Grant, or anything, or any questions for Joe, I guess?
Yeah, 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 keep going, that's right, keep going.
Alright, so Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant, it's open now, it's due May thirty-first, the match is fifteen percent. We can do, we can do construction, we can do planning, as far as like engineering goes, for a park of that nature. So I just want to bring that, because I know there's a lot of, they talk about planning for different recreational parks. Move on to the next one, if no one has any questions specifically on that one. U S Department- Um, U S Department of Justice will approve best partnership grant, um, that opens April first. Um, if we purchase any, any vests after April first as far as opening goes, if we apply for this and are awarded, those, uh, vests are, um, allowed to be reimbursed up to fifty percent. So we'll get fifty percent of the cost of vests back, whatever, um, if we are awarded. I'm going to assume that's something that we want to do, based off of conversations.
Does it, I mean, does, can it be also for code office also? Doesn't this have to be? I didn't know if it's only for police own head or how that works. Police own head.
Yeah, it says, uh, the term they use is law enforcement also.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I didn't ask that question specifically, but I'm going to assume based off the language of the video. A little bit of that's important also.
True, true.
Um, any questions?
Alright, go ahead, Mr. Barnhart, Councilman Barnhart, you're up, sir.
Back in September and October, we took a ride with Wes at the DCNR on the, on the dike. So where the river walk ends down by the fabric ham, we're gonna sort of walk hopefully along the dike to go all the way around. Got a blacktop with benches and lights and all the bells and whistles on it that that's needed. Uh, before Jeff Lewis resigned, he was in touch with the Army Corps of Engineer, and they, they approved it, but since he stepped down, the, the new, uh, well, the M A, Jason Knighty, said he wants to confirm it with the Army Corps of Engineer that it's, that it did met their standards. And also, we got to get approval from the, the board, from the municipal authority board. So once that's all approved, we have, uh, I already got somebody to do a study. And the way Jason was talking with the Army Corps, he said that we might have to do the study before they'll even look at it. So we're still in discussion with that to make sure we have everything lined up, we'll get it. But that's, I think that would be a real boost for Sunbury, a nature walk along the dike, get to see all the sights.
Okay.
Yeah, but Jason was supposed to take care of that, but I, I would type up a letter. Yeah, you're right.
I remember speaking with Jason before. This was something that he was trying to do for years down there, but...
Jeff was, yeah.
Excuse me, yeah, excuse me. Jeff was trying to be down there for years to try to establish, never had, you know, the times or the bill or someone pushing for it. So he was on orbit before.
And Wes, Wes talked to him, and he, his statement was, this is a home run waiting to be hit. He said this would be a real shot in the arm for Sunbury when we get this.
I would put it behind, so we have something to talk on.
Any other, uh, any other questions for Councilman Barnhart for the nature walk there?
I just figured, I have talked to DCED, DCNR, and everybody wants to see a plan basically done, but they don't make any funds or allow us to get any funds from the state as far as construction goes.
Well, we did get some quotes for the, uh...
So like I said, get that letter, we can get, you know, have the board can talk about it, and then we get more updates as we, you know, they talk about it as well. Alright, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Uh, I gotta talk to Jason again about that.
I'm not complaining. I just want to say something this time. The library has a story walk that we had come and proposed, and I'm just hoping that we, I know there's been a lot going on with Sussman Avenue and a really crappy winter, but if we could get Steve's attention, your guys' attention, to try and get the story walk up at the riverfront, that would be a fun transition moving towards. So, um, we have all the pieces of, or I think Steve has all the pieces and parts. Hopefully, they can dedicate some time to that up there.
And Melissa, I believe Miss Melissa met with him last year to discuss the locations of the stores, correct?
Yeah, so if he needs to touch base with Melissa to revisit that, but, I mean, hopefully soon we can implement.
We were gonna have storyboards. Jeff suggested storyboards on the, on the dike wall.
So we can, you know, good game plan to try to do the, you know, what the work, the history of a lot of stuff like that, okay? Go ahead, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Uh, I talked to Jason and Pat. We're gonna have a citywide spring cleanup like we had last year. The date will be determined, but just so everybody's aware, that will be happening.
Do you know how many, are you gonna have it one day, three days?
We, we need...
Or to, or to be determined?
To be determined, that we are gonna have another one.
Alright, awesome, good to know. Uh, then moving on here to RC Racetrack, uh, we had a good lot of feedback here on some different designs. Some individuals reached out with phone numbers that I'll pass on the gym here that he can reach out to help him design the parks. He was the most, the best economic way to build it, or designed to have the least amount of maintenance as possible. Alright, awesome. We'll do. Alright, um, moving on here to announcements. Uh, the next council meeting will be held, uh, March tenth here at six fifteen. Uh, Spring Cleanup for Tire and Television Recycling Event will take place March twenty-second at one twenty-eight Memorial Drive. That's behind John O'Longfield, the parking lot there. It will take place from ten A M., twelve P M. Uh, light, uh, car and light truck tires are five dollars each, and a TV of one dollar per pound for the weight of the TV. Uh, only a hundred TVs will be accepted at the event. You must call and register prior at five seven zero to eight six seven eight two zero, extension five oh two, prior to March twenty-first. If your TV is not registered, it will not be accepted. Um, you need not to live in Sunbury to participate in this event, and if you're willing to help with the traffic control, please come down Shipwell Avenue to Memorial Laker Drive and John O'Longfield. Um, the Volatus of, uh, Easter Icon will take place April fifth from nine to twelve. The Goodwill Host, Goodwill Host Playground. Uh, the Fire Police Chinese Opera will take place at the Sunbury Eagles at thirty-three South Thursday on May tenth from eleven A M. to four P M. Any other announcements anymore?
Question. So far, before the council meeting on March tenth at five P M., did you have anything to answer?
We may have had one scheduled. Just schedule them all out. There's no need to have it, but... Okay, I'll announce it.
I think, I think Jeff put every, he's scheduled it for a year.
They're, they're in the newspaper.
Yeah, we, we scheduled them out because it's more financially responsible. Do it that way, discuss each one at a time. So we'll see March tenth, first session at five P M. There we go.
Maybe put on social media to, uh, look at it.
Yeah. Alright, uh, is, is there any other announcements on the city end? Alright, is there any public comment at this time? Alright, I'll start here and work my way back. Please say your name, sir.
Alan Bob, and I'd like to know what streets are being planned for this paving project.
Al, I'll give you the paper. That way you can review it. How's that sound?
Sound tremendous.
Here you go. I'll be right here when you need it, then, Al.
I'll take that home and test it again.
Any other questions other than that one, Al? Alright, thanks, sir. Please say your name, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Sandra Line. Um, I live on Chestnut Street. We are trying to put together an birthday celebration. Um, I, I got a, an application from downstairs today. Yay! I got confirmation of a million dollars worth of insurance coverage created by the city to all beings on one end of the application. Um, we're planning to do an birthday celebration out here in Cameron Park. Um, there will be no cost to the city. There will be no cost to participants. It's mainly to recognize, um, the people who are already doing cleanouts and such, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and whatever groups are doing it, and just to, um, help make it a better world here. And what we would like from council is maybe a proclamation, kind of like the one you did earlier.
Yeah, I mean, if you can, I know there's ones out there. If you can just get me something that, how you would like it to be said or read, if you can do that, that would be no problem.
Right, I would, I would do that. Can I make a time for me with you? I left a message a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
I just need like fifteen minutes.
Yeah, we can set something up there then.
Okay.
Thank you, man, appreciate it. Alright, any other public comment? Please say your, please say your name.
Jodi Yonker. Um, I just want to say on behalf of SRI that I really appreciate the city's support when we have events. When we are at the riverfront or in Cameron Park, out of Fourth Street, because that contribution allows us to put on an event, and we rely on those events to raise funds for our operations. We could not continue to do what we do without being able to raise those funds. So all of that in-kind support that you provide and the staff provides, and are always so very helpful with the garbage, with the barriers of walking the streets and all of that, I just want to say how much we really appreciate that because it's so vital for us to be able to continue doing what we do. So thank you.
Jodi, we want to thank you taking that project going to the Albright Center because it's, it's a twenty-year venture.
Yeah.
And someone won't be around to see the end of it, but you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
I agree.
Any other public comment at this time?
Victoria Rosenkrans.
So the only thing I want to say is, I have one of us friends been here for a while, so three minutes, here we go. RC Track, saw the wonderful post out on Facebook on social media, Mr. Barnhart. And what I was concerned about was the fact that this information was put out there like, oh my God, we just got a grant for the RC Track that happened back in twenty twenty-one. Okay? Not sure why it was put out there that way, but it was sort of misleading. I made a comment about it. Has anyone followed up with the sports own, business owner down there? Okay, what?
Uh, I talked to him just before he moved down to...
Yeah, he's, he's not here anymore.
I know how it started, and I've asked, because I went back through every minute since twenty twenty-one, and I have asked eight times where we were with this project. And it was put out...
Vic, we're here, we're here now. We're here, we're getting, we're getting at it.
Well, sometimes it's put out there.
I think you misinterpreted it. You, I'm sorry.
I misinterpreted the fact that we got a grant for an RC Track to get in twenty twenty-one. Please let me talk, please let me talk.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Please let me talk, because right now what this is doing, this right, left hand over here and the right hand.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's, we got bullshit happening up on Sussman Avenue. So what we're gonna do is put out here that we got a grant for an RC Track to take attention off of Sussman Avenue. And the subject with the RC Track, please do it right, and please get it done because that's grant money that's been sitting there since twenty twenty-one. Now, all of a sudden, it's a great idea. One more thing in the city of Sunbury that got put aside because it wasn't important, it's something else. Moving on, I got a grant. Can this one please explain to me what happens when the treasurer retires a name? Who, who runs the treasurer's office?
It will be, have to be individuals that can put their name in to be appointed to that elected, elected official position. Just like when there was a vacancy on council, when last, when Councilman Reitner, if you say process.
Okay, and then that creates, that gets out to the public that they can apply to be appointed now?
Yeah, when he gives his official letter of resignation, or when the date will be, we'll announce that, hey, we're taking applications or whether there's interest till this date, and then interviews will be held as we did before in a public forum where everyone can hear everyone, or the candidates' comments.
If he decides to. If he decides.
Well, what my concern is, is that the public understands the process. That's my concern, because it's out there. People are asking me, not for me to explain it, for you people to, for you to explain to the citizens, you know? Road closures. I am going to inform you right now that Light Fest will not be doing Christmas in the line. We are not making money because I can't shut down Market Street. I can only shut down one side, and that makes me say to fifty vendors that they can't come. So I have to reboot and do a different kind of fundraiser because I can't shut down Market Street, which I find to be disheartening because another then got to shut down both sides of that street. But Light Fest can't do it. Moving on, we're not, I'm not even discussing it. And so I hope that other people that are trying to do events in the city know I'm not gonna move my light, I'm not moving Light Fest down to the river because I don't have enough volunteers because it takes a lot to do it at the river. These folks know that. I know that, okay? So what I'm saying is, one more time, Victoria Rosenkrans and Light Fest is crap at the end of the step, and I can't shut down those streets, so therefore I lost spooky vendors that I can't put out. I digress, moving on. The other thing I was informed in is that Light Fest is not going to get any funding, grants, because when grants are put in, we have to do the follow-up to that grant. Here's the receipts, here's what we did, this is what we did with it. And I have been informed that the Cycle Foundation and all those foundations through Ben Atalbong's office that I am not going to get any grants this year until the ICE rank thirty-two thousand, one hundred dollars grant report completed. Was that completed yet, Mr. Backer?
I didn't apply for that one. I, there's not, I don't apply for all the grants. I know everybody thinks I do. There's a lot of...
Well, that is another confusion because you are, is, is out there that you're the grant person. And that's my other concern is that I'm told, well, this grant goes here, and this grant goes over here. Guess what? I do my own grants, and I do my own follow-up because I can't rely on the folks to do it that are supposed to do it.
I don't disagree. There are grants that I, I don't deal with if it deals with certain events or certain whatever when it goes to foundations.
So, so that's my concern. So whoever needs to do that, I'm gonna ask you to please do it because I've already lost my money now because they already met. And I was told I'm not going to, the city of Sunbury is not going to get any more grants, and so that is taken care of, which is really crappy. So I have six hundred children that tell, sorry, can't buy you books this year because I didn't get a grant, and now I have to work places hard. Fire consolidation. I received this horrible letter that's out there from, about the fire consolidation. I don't know who wrote it. It's just heartening. It's full of lies. So I have a copy of it, John, I'll get it to you, because it is not good. Okay, and it's, and it's already creating a buzz in the city. It's like at White Markets, it's at the Bonderment. It's full, I don't know who wrote it. I'm trying, of course, no one's gonna own up to it, but once you be aware of it, and I, if I'm all for the consolidation, I'm not standing here against it. I think it's needed. But I don't think that rhetoric out there is good for our city. I do believe you said you were gonna have like a public meeting to discuss all that once all that happens, or is that the case, or maybe not, I don't know.
Consolidation?
Yeah.
I think the public should be aware of it, yet they know it's going on.
Yeah, but I mean, once it's finalized, because there's a lot of stuff in there that is not true. So I'll get you a copy of it so you can say ahead of it and share it with the chiefs or whatever, but it's really disheartening. Anyway, and the only other thing I'm gonna ask is that when you're giving rooms away downstairs, please don't give away light restroom.
No, all your stuff is, yeah, there, there were the vacant rooms that had no action.
I'm just saying, because the police department doesn't have room for the Easter eggs and all that stuff that we do, and so don't, don't give my, if I need a smaller room, I'll take it, but don't give my room away. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please say your name, sir.
One.
One.
Don't you think that's kind of disrespectful?
That's, and you're absolutely correct. When I, I was talking to a couple, uh, like talked to Chief, uh, Alumpi, Chief Long. And I told him that starting, I said I should be aware, especially everything that's going on, so starting March fourth, I will be there.
I don't know what's in Vicki's letter, but I can tell you there's a whole lot of crap going on with this consolidation. The only benefit so far is the consultants got forty thousand dollars. That's one thing that I would say, it's crazy we should do that. Somebody need to step in here, huh?
I'm gonna start.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Alright, turn this meeting.